Before we start our meeting tonight, we're going to have an invocation and we're going to do the pledge. Reverend Don Miller is with us tonight, and he's going to do our invocation. And I guess I'm going to lead the pledge. Stand please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll remain standing, please. Don?
Father in heaven, what a privilege it is to come and pray for this outstanding group of citizens here in Connersville. We pray, Father, for their meeting. Each one of the ladies and gentlemen that are here left their home and come and use their talents, their abilities to make decisions about our community. Just be with them as they meet just now. Father, we're thankful for this community. We pray, Father, with the beginning of schools that you'll be with all concerned there, youngsters that go, teachers, principals, counselors, all that are involved in that. May they give it their best each and every day. And, Father, we are thankful for the cooler weather the school was started. Father, we pray for the wildfires out in the western part of the United States. And I just pray, Father, for all those who were there putting themselves on the line, and for the homeowners who are desperate for a solution to the problem. Father, we just give it all to you. Father, I do pray for Harold, and Holly, and Brian, as they contend for city government here. Father, just pray as they share their ideas, that they'll be civil and they'll be respectful of each other, that they will share some outstanding ideas. And, Father, just be with us as individual citizens. Father, may we always do the best that we can to be good citizens here in Connersville. In these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Remain standing, please. Brenda Todd's brother passed away yesterday. She was the secretary at EDG for 10 years. She just left last Friday, and I'd like to bow for just a moment of silence in memory of the Todd family. Thank you, our Father. Thanks, Father. This being our regular city council meeting for August the 17th, 2015, we'll have the full call.
Councilwoman Rich, present. Councilman Weber, present. Councilman Schomel, present. Councilman Albee, present. Councilwoman Montgomery, present. Councilman Creek, present. Councilwoman Silas, present.
The record show that all council people are present tonight. We have a forum and we can do business. I'd ask if you please turn your cell phones on silent or on library, if you will, please. And we will start with the three minutes of the August 3rd city council meeting.
Make a motion to pass, what it is.
I hear a second.
Sir?
Got a motion and a second that we passed the minutes as they were sent out to the council people. Is there any changes? Any discussion? None appearing. All in favor, say aye. Any vote? Motion carried. The minutes approved, has sent out. We've got a couple little things we need to do tonight. Richard Abcock, is he here tonight? I was expecting him to be here. He is going on the honor flight, and we were going to honor him for just a couple of minutes. He may not have been able to make it. He may come a little late. We'll try to pass that on. He's a World War II veteran that'll be doing the Indian Honor Flight just shortly.
That's great.
Welcome everybody here. And we'll start out with our new business. Sports Complex, Ronnie Coldar. Ronnie's a member of the board once. He's been working for the last two or three years with the foundation and others on trying to accomplish to get the baseball fields out of the place over here where Mesa's used to be, and up on the hill with the soccer field. And Ronnie, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Calvert. Good seeing you this evening. I'm here tonight to request funding to purchase property to move the baseball fields or make a city sports complex. The past 14, 15 months, we've kind of been working toward this end as far as trying to negotiate land application and so on. I don't think any of us would have a question that we need to do something with the sports fields that we've had ever since I can remember down there in the bottom. It floods several times a year, and the accommodations there are pretty much limited. And not to speak of, that's where our city wells are also located down in that area. But I asked the mayor several months ago, I'm going to say 14, 15 months ago, if I could look into this change. And we have come up with negotiations of a landowner which owns the property adjacent to our soccer complex out there. It incorporates a soccer complex. And John, put that overview of the land, John, on the board. The landowner has agreed to sell the property, and in doing so, we had to have a basis to start from. We had the land appraised. I don't know how to point it here. Follow the cursor there, and John can kind of show you the outline of what we're talking about. Takes in the river application, too. There's around 48 to 49 acres total of this land that's there, not including the soccer field that's there. You know, years ago, I don't know if you guys remember, Harry Brewer, Harry's in real estate. That's been a long time ago, kind of aging myself here. You talk about purchasing real estate, there's three things that you need to know, and all of them are location. And so I look at it the same way. When we look at this field here adjacent to the Memorial Highway, with our soccer fields already there, we also have a river access there. I don't think we could find a more perfect location to choose a sports complex for the city of Connersville. State Road 1 being in proximity, really easy access. There's a good visible area there, folks coming into town. I just don't think we could find a more appropriate place if we were to build a sports complex. That's why I went to the landowner and asked him if he would consider, although this has been in his family for generations, he has agreed to sell the land. With that being said, we did have it appraised. You're welcome to see the appraisals. I don't have one with me here. Mayor's got one in his office. I think the foundation might have one. But the land that's in question there, the majority of the acres, 30-some acres appraised at almost $12,000 an acre collectively. If we purchase this land, including the bottom ground down toward the river, which does give us river access, which by the way, works real handily with a comprehensive plan in Connersville when you incorporate that in also, we can buy this property for $325,000, well under an appraised value. So it's not the fact that we're overextending for the worth of the property. I don't think anyone would question the area of use there. But if, John, if you will, if you look at these renderings here, now, these are just renderings of what can be done with the property, okay? This is nothing setting, granted, but I've never built a ball diamond in my life, so we had to have someone to kind of share, you know, if it would work very well or not. But you can see, we've got room for six diamonds. There's like 400 parking spaces. Another good thing is, there's a dual entrance. We've got the entrance off the soccer fields, but you can come around with a roundabout and come down west of the Duke Energy property there for an exit. So the egress is great. The Memorial driveway, we couldn't ask for a more safer, probably, highway than to assess the property. The rendering of the soccer fields is just something that could be done, so don't get lost on the drawing there. It just shows you that it fits very well. And again, we'll still have river access and so on. What I'm requesting is funding to purchase this. I don't want to take a lot of time. It's a busy evening, but I'm willing to try to answer any questions that you've got. I can go into the funding now, or you can ask questions, and we'll use that as part two. So you want me to kind of explain where maybe we could get some funds from? Is that a good, appropriate time now, or you got questions so far?
I have one quick question. Does all the ground there that's in the tree line there, is that all a part of that?
Yes, all down across the river. We actually have river access.
All the way to the Memorial Highway?
Yes, yes. Yes, all the way to the highway. There's about, I think there's 14 lower acres there, if you've been out there. Actually, the flood plain, the DNR flood plain says the flood plain is on the west side of the river. In other words, when the river overflows, it flows west. But that's not saying that that wooded area wasn't flooded, but we're well up, the topography rises there. Fields would never flood. I mean, there's no way that you'd ever get any flooding up there. If it does, we're all going to leave. We'll all be in Cincinnati if that happens. So, but anyhow. So it is a good area, it's a good flat area. Soccer fields are already there. We do have restroom facilities already there. Duke, as far as the Duke Energy Building, to me, that would be an asset because they keep the property very nice and something like that. Other questions?
Ron, you had said $325,000 for approximately 48 acres?
Forty-eight, 49 acres, we're not for sure.
So I'm going to assume that the person that owns it, I actually want you to take 48. What I'm saying is, you can't buy 15 acres. You can't buy 20 acres.
I'm going to say no. We did ask about that, if they're going to split his land in the middle, which wouldn't make real sense to him.
Okay.
And really, I don't think you could have too much land, Tom. I really don't think you could. It's not that you're going to put something on every square inch of it, but, you know, it's just nice to have, for whatever reason. We do have good parking facilities there, which is something that we're always wanted down over the hill. If anybody's been down there, you know, it's kind of chaotic as far as that goes. So...
And my other question, since council has to deal with the finances first, would be, where, you know, because we're having issues financially, you know, where will we get the funding to make the initial purchase, and then where would the funding come to?
Put it together.
Yeah, put it together with all the infrastructure. And, you know, I know it would be something down the road.
Let me approach that like this. We need to invest in ourself. If you don't have any confidence in yourself, no one's going to look at you, throw money at you. That's just a personal business or whatever. So I think we need to get the mindset that we need to do things for, all we can for ourself, as it comes to funding. There is a remediation fund that was put together for the Smolley's remediation project, environmental project. I'm going to show exactly what that was called.
All of the different companies paid into that project to remediate the old dump. This is the excess money that came off of that dump.
Okay. Now, and to address the finance situation of the city, this is money that cannot be used to pay light bills, to buy uniforms. It was specifically going to be used for environmental issues.
You're talking about the remediation money?
Yeah, remediation money. There's about $600,000 still in that fund. And we can't spend all that fund. And council has given us a letter here today that kind of states the fact that we do have to leave probably around $300,000 in that fund for future whatever happens, to perpetuate any cleanup that might be necessary. So that's leaving us a little over $300,000 in that fund that can be used for environmental purposes. And Mr. Baker looked at it for us when we asked him to, and asked him to submit a letter to us, too, of his opinion. And you're welcome to see this letter. I wish I had copies of it, and I give it all to you.
Yeah, I want that letter read. Do you want to read it, or do you want Mr. Schomel to read it?
Doesn't make any difference.
Go ahead.
Okay. This is dated today. Pursuant to the amendments of the Third Consent Degree between Indiana Department of Environmental Management and City of Connersville, Indiana, the remaining amount of approximately $600,000 left in the landfill remediation trust fund was transferred to the city to be used for future Connersville City landfill environmental remediation, if any. I recommend that a substantial amount of this fund be set aside, a restricted account for this purpose of environmental remediation of the city of Connersville landfill. A portion of the remaining proceeds could be used to apply towards the purchase of certain acreage contiguous to the city soccer complex for baseball fields and ancillary uses. The amendment to the Third Consent Degree leaves a great deal of discretion concerning the use of the remaining funds, whereas in paragraph 13 is provided that the funds can be used for long-term maintenance, remedial activities, and other purposes that are protective of human health and the environment. And I interpret this to be in areas other than Connersville City landfill. It is my opinion that the new baseball diamonds at the proposed site would meet this requirement, and cleanup of the current baseball field's location and transfer to a new facility would be protective of human health and the environment, especially in light of the annual flooding that occurs at the present location. Therefore, I am of the opinion that a proper use of a portion of the remaining Connersville City landfill funds would be for the purchase of real estate for baseball diamonds and ancillary uses. So that's coming from our city councillor.
So what you're saying is, and I have the utmost respect for Mr. Baker, it's Mr. Baker's opinion that we could take money from that remediation fund to purchase farm ground to build a baseball field?
Exactly.
What does that have to do with remediation?
I think there's two areas there that I see, and John might have to help me on this. One, it's going to get our public out of that flood area down there.
Well, I guess what I'm saying, I was in this meeting, Max was mayor, I think, maybe Baker, 10 years ago, Lake Minneapolis came down. It was close to a million dollars, this remediation fund. For you folks that don't know what I'm talking about, many, many years ago, all the local factories dumped all their poisonous waste, paint, different cleaners, south into town. And IDAM made those companies, put this pool of money together to clean up that area, okay? That area. And I think we took several hundred thousand for that white elephant up on Western Avenue. We took money for that. And I don't know, and I have the most utmost respect for Mr. Baker, I don't know how you can get, I mean, I don't know how that is remediation, we're taking that money to buy farm ground. I mean, I'm not trying to be argumentative, Ron.
No, I don't take it that way. I think we have to get our mindset off of what happened down south of town, and put the same mindset in our ball diamond that we've got now. We do have environmental issues down there. So what we're doing, we're reciprocal, we're putting that, what am I going to say, that amount of money towards betterment of our whole city.
And I understand that, Ron. Leonard brought this up three or four months ago, and I had stated then, without trying to be argumentative, we have city land that we're not utilizing now for baseball fields. And I understand the thought behind it. Again, it goes back with just this council person, not just the funding for the property. I think a river walk would be awesome, okay? I'm proud of that. Where are you going to get the funds to build that project? And my biggest concern, and this is just me, this is my biggest concern, is we got four and a half months to be in office. We're going to have a new mayor, a new clerk treasurer. We're going to have one council person, for sure, all new people. And I just don't think the timing's right. I'm not saying I'm against it, Ron. I just have questions on where the funding's going to come from, and then once the purchase is made, where the funding's going to come from for the sports complex?
I mentioned at the outset that we need to invest in ourself, and I believe that 100 percent. You can't go to corporate, you can't go around and ask for funding for a pie in the sky. I mean, they just, they're not stupid people. If we invest in a piece of property, okay, for the betterment of our public and our children and the whole nine yards, let's face it, parents put money in kids.
Absolutely.
And about all your aggressive cities around, you'll see nice sports complexes because they're busy. I mean, they're just busy all the time. With that being said, if we take this money that's laying there, and we invest it in ourself, and then you go to a corporate and say, "Look, this is what we're going to do," then they're more apt to say, "Yes, I will sponsor a field, or I will do this for you." But it's hard for me to walk into a corporate office and say, "We've got an idea."
I understand that.
You see what I'm saying? So I think the best opportunity is get the land secured, do it step for step. Let's get the land secured, show them that we're serious about doing something. And then they're going to be serious about funding whatever they want to fund for the complex. This is something that's, you know, if you had a corporate entity that's going to build a field there, naturally, you're going to name that field after that corporate sponsor. And it's a perpetual PR thing for them, I mean, from now on. I can't stress enough that the money's laying there. I can't argue with our council as to the fact that it is, or can, or cannot be used as environmental. I think it very much is environmental, but there again, you know, that's opinions. We can't just leave this money. Well, I'll tell you what's going to happen. I've seen it happen over the last 10 years. You'll have money pooled for whatever, that's specific money to be used, all right? It's laying there, it's an excess of whatever it's going to be used for. Then Ivory Towers in Indianapolis, and I'm sorry, but they learned that there's excessive money out there in these cities, and all of a sudden, they pass another legislation to do another study. So they'll come in and they'll put the carrot out in front of us here. You know, "Let's do another study, and we can use this money that's laying in this pool here to do the study with, and hopefully, you're going to get another X amount of dollars if we do the study." So they'll come in, and they'll take us all to Miller Center, and buy us a nice Cordon bleu chicken dinner, and give us a nice little color grosir, and show us a PowerPoint, and we'll write the check for whatever money out of fund, and then the book gets laid on the shelf, and all of a sudden, our pockets are dry again with nothing going on. Invest in yourself. I mean, I'll challenge this. You know, a business owner for 40 years, you've got to invest in yourself. If you don't, other people are not eager to invest with you either. I mean, that's just, this is the way it works. So I'm saying, take the money, invest in ourself, and we'll get the corporate. This is not something that's going to happen in six months.
Right.
Let's address the political end of it. I don't care about the politics of it. We care about putting the sports complex together. If we did secure the land today, if we secured the land today, this is not something that this administration's going to see the fruition of. It's not going to happen. I don't know whether it's going to be a year. I don't know what it's going to be two years. I don't know what it's going to be five years. But we've got something secure to start on, that we can build on, and make something for the future of Connersville. That's the way I look at it. So invest in yourself. You've got the money there. It can't be earmarked for nothing else. Our council's saying that it can be used. So to me, it's a no-brainer.
Well, and I respectfully disagree. Again, I was in the meeting where this money was earmarked to cleanup, and it hasn't been followed through with yet, okay?
So there's cleanup to be done?
It's not anyone's fault. No, I've seen the proposed drawings for a beautiful river walk on this side, and a lookout, dah 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 dah. It wasn't done. And again, I have that with respect for Mr. Baker. You still haven't convinced me that you can take, I can understand if you're going to take the remediation money and clean up the Babe Ruth Field down by the, or at the present location. But to take the remediation money, because like you say, we've already dipped in this once for that mess on Western Avenue, okay? It got taken into, as you said, how different peoples get, justify how we're going to do things, okay? Now, I'm just saying, at this particular time, and this is just me, four and a half months, you're going to have a new mayor, a new clerk treasurer, and a new council. To me, the timing, the timing is just not good at this time. I'm just talking about me.
You say it's going to put a burden on the rest of the council if the ground is actually paid for?
I'm not sure the rest of the council, I'm going to make this up. Let's just make this up. I'm going to say me, Mr. Weber, Mr. Schomel. We're not going to run, okay? So we're going to go.
Run away.
And then another one does, okay? So we made this decision, okay? And this next council that's going to come in in four and a half months, this is what they just inherited. That is my...
But they haven't inherited a bill. They've inherited something.
Well, first of all, we don't even know if it's even legal. Mr. Baker, that's his opinion. And there's a good chance an environment attorney would say, "No, you can do that."
Well, let's put it this way. If this letter doesn't suffice for moving forward with this, can I approach you in the fact that we'll take this at face value, and do more research, and if it can be used by, who else will we go to, John? I don't know.
Well, I think, Tom, one of the things you may want to consider doing, if you haven't already, and maybe you have, is read the amendment to the Third Consent Degree. Back in 2009, we saw the money was left over from the city landfill trust. It was dormant. It wasn't being used for anything. There was a trustee that was being paid quarterly fees that were substantial. So I negotiated with the Department of Environmental Management through their attorney, and one of the attorneys at the Attorney General's office, and we came up with an amendment to the Third Consent Degree, which the court approved, the U.S. District Court in Indianapolis. And there's quite a bit in this that goes beyond the landfill. In talking to IDAM and the Attorney General's office, they saw the money was there. They were of the opinion that 95 percent, if not 99 percent, of all the remediation had been done. So that money was there that should be used for some productive purpose. And of course, they also were of the opinion that a certain amount ought to be set aside just in case something got flooded there and so on.
Was that a certain amount? Did you make that up, or was it what they suggested?
They said a certain amount. We don't have, I would suggest.
They actually suggested $250,000. I set the $300,000 because I wanted to be safe.
The amount in the trust fund was $600,000. That was not being used, and it hadn't been used for some time. So we negotiated this amended consent decree, and it has a lot of flexibility. And that was intentional, because it was obvious that that particular area had been remediated. I think IDAM was pretty well satisfied of that. And they put a rock wall, a pretty substantial rock wall to prevent erosion and so on. So the money left over, they provided, it was provided in this consent decree, that the funds could be used for remedial activities. And it even says for park purposes, and I think that alludes to a park in that neighborhood. But it does say for park purposes, which is not remediation. It's not environmental cleanup. A park, you know, is a little different than that. I understand what you're saying, huh? If it was nothing more than environmental remediation, it would say so. But it doesn't. It gives it a lot more latitude, and a lot more leeway. And in paragraph 13, it allowed the city to use money, as you indicated earlier, for Visteon cleanup. And I don't know how much, if any, was used. I don't think it was a great deal. But that's going quite a ways afield from the landfill. And it also says that the balance of the proceeds will be, can be used for long-term maintenance, remedial activities of any environmental problem, and other purposes that are protective of human health and the environment. and other purposes that are protective of human health and the environment. And I'm interpreting that to mean what we're doing here tonight. Removing the ball fields from their current location that floods often in the spring, uh, uh, late winter, spring, I don't know how often. Usually, uh, at least once a year. And get it to an area where it's high and dry. I think that's probably good, good health practice, as well as, uh, environmental practice to get, get the site in an area that doesn't flood. And, uh, the, the agreement contemplates that type of, uh, use of the money, in my opinion. Again, and I bet another attorney could read this, that looked at it very narrowly, read it very narrowly. The court didn't. The court signed this. The court signed it in its present form. The court was satisfied that it was, it was to be general. A latitude was given by the court. And, uh, based upon the, the agreement that we, we arrived at. So I think, uh, what they're telling us is, between the lines, save some money back for the landfill in case it goes crazy, and use the other money for good, sound, uh, purposes that are good for the, uh, environment, as well as good for, um, protective of human health.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did that help?
It helped a little bit, but again, as I said, it, with me, and I do speak for myself, it, it's the timing.
Yeah.
Um, we got four and a half months, you know, if, I, I guess I could say.
I was sort of not understanding the, the problem. If I was coming new on council.
Ron, the problem is, and I'm trying to be nice, okay?
No, that's okay.
I really, but three months ago, Mr. Irvin brought this stuff and stuff, and I said then, and I haven't changed my mind.
That's fine.
We, we moved, well, I called Babe Ruth, where I played at, where he played at, down on Rumpus Park. It got moved to the Riverbys, where the mosquitoes are. That land is just laying there.
Yeah.
In the north end of town where I was raised and I played ball 60 years ago, there's space there that could be utilized. We have an area, wait a minute, wait a minute. We have an area here, it doesn't even have a sidewalk to that area.
Yeah.
Okay? I'm talking about in Offutt Park.
Okay.
There's a huge, huge area up there. I, I'm just saying, they are not being utilized.
In the horseshoe?
Yeah.
In the horseshoe.
Yeah. I'm just saying, they're not being utilized.
I, I think we're gonna have to, we might have to think a little, little more broader than this. Sports complexes in cities today, and I'm not gonna lead you astray, I, I don't know that they're self-supporting by no means.
They're not, trust me.
But they aren't revenue generators. And they're, I mean, I've been in both horseshoes out there. There's no way that you could accommodate a sports complex like we're talking about for the city and accommodate the traffic flow. You would actually be a worse hazard than having it out on Memorial Highway. When, when you're talking about a, a sports facility that could, that could be leased to the Babe Ruths, to the little league entities, that, you know, to have, to have the actual, uh, revenue gains there. It, I don't want, we can bring economics into it, I think that's good, because it is a good economic issue for, for the city. It looks good. But let's go, let's go back to the property, you know, someone coming into town, it, it just looks aggressive. You know, I, I'm, I'm really saddened, and I think everybody else is too, by the article that was in the paper three or four weeks ago, that it just was not true at all. And I, I think this aggression, if we could, if we could secure this property and start towards, and I, I agree with you, Tom, it's not gonna happen in four months, four and a half months, it's not gonna happen. But it can happen, especially if we get something secured here. And it looks like, we're, we're trusting in ourself, we're building something for ourself, that people coming into our city has a reason to come now. And, uh, that's, that's what you're gonna have to understand. We're not, we're not building this for four and a half months, we're not building it for a year from now, we're building it for 20 years from now. And, and that's what you have to look at. I'm just, you know, that's, that's the way I look at it.
Let's kind of, let's kind of move on here.
No, I got some questions.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's see what's on.
Now, an easy decision for me would be to say yes with no reservations.
Sure.
I mean, I got, I got a four and five-year-old, and I love the idea of having access and having a, having a public access. I mean, that's phenomenal, I've been out, talking about that for years now. I do have a, a pretty significant reservation, though. How much would it cost to build those fields? Do we have a plan of how, like, we're on build phase one, this is one, these two fields, we're gonna build phase two, these two fields? Can any of this stuff be moved up from the current fields? Or are we just gonna have to pay all brand-new things?
I, I'm sure there, I'm sure there's facilities that can be used, and there's some that we don't wanna use. I've never built a ball diamond. But there's, to, to me, the first step is securing that area to build. We can build ball diamonds on 50 acres. If I was talking about six acres, I think it'd be a concern. But we're talking about almost 50 acres of property here, a chooseable land. What does it cost to build a ball diamond? I've never built one in my life. But I do know that if the land's secured there, and we start working toward that, then we've got something to start putting money together for.
I think we're kinda putting a cart before horse when we do that, though. I mean, if we spend 325,000 dollars on a piece of land and it just sits there, and we're gonna spend $2 million on ball diamonds.
It's not sitting there, dude, we got a soccer field already there. They're already using part of it.
If it's just a cornfield, it's still just a cornfield.
But there's revenue there, too.
That's, that's.
But not tremendous amounts. Hold on, hold on a second. Um, I just think there needs to be a plan in place. You talked about, you have to go to the businesses with a plan. If you don't have a plan, and all you got's a piece of land, they still don't wanna invest. You have to have a plan in place.
What, what if I went to you and asked you to invest in something, "I'm gonna try to buy this," will you?
I'm not gonna invest in a plan or something that's a pipe dream either.
But God, it's not a pipe dream. If you, if you've put the money into it already, it's not a pipe dream.
All you have is a piece of land.
It's the, I know, and that's great, and I'm making any more of it.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That's wonderful stuff.
I agree with that, but if you don't have a plan to get to, hold on, man.
Yeah, that's good.
I mean, if we have like a, a phase one, like, it's gonna expect a cost of, I don't know, $50,000. I don't wanna cost a bunch of ball fields.
Me, phase one is securing the area.
Okay, then that should be in a plan, I think. In phase two, it's gonna cost this much to build these three diamonds. I don't know if we're building three diamonds, or we're building two diamonds, or we're building one diamond.
Or one diamond at a time.
That, that's what I'm saying. I just don't think that's been thought through yet.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we're ready for that. I really don't.
Can I ask you a question, wait a minute? What was the appraisal on the land you're talking about?
It was a little 12,000 acres.
You did two, two appraisals and you took the average?
No, there was, there was two appraisal companies had to be involved in it for the state, and they collaborated together and came up.
So the, the praise value of that land's 12,000 acres times.
Yes.
Times 45. So what's the total value of that land? How much?
That bought 12,000.
There's no way.
There is no.
There is no way.
Okay, hold on now, let's just look at it, let's just talk about it. Okay, so.
But, hold on a second.
Wait a minute.
Wait a second, if you're gonna buy this farm ground, there is no farm ground for 12,500 acres. There is none.
You can't look at that as just farm ground.
No, 10, no. You're looking 10.5.
Okay, let's, let's go to 10.5.
If you, if you're looking at that as farm ground, you're looking at the best ground, Posey Township is probably around 85 to 10,000, 10.5 at the most. There's a 275 parcel of, or piece of land up in Wayne County that's sitting, bearing, it's been sitting there with no owner for about a year and a half, because they want 10.5 for it. That's not 10.5 ground.
Appraisals, appraisals are done by comparisons. And the comparison's also taking the fact that this could be lauded off for housing, just like it is across Riverbent. And so when, when I said it fits my piece of property, then I want that to take into consideration. So we can't, you can't just look at it as like a cornfield.
I understand that, and then if that's the case, then you have to look at the.
Well, that's where the pricing comes in at.
But then you have to look at the bottom ground, it's not as valuable ground.
It's, it's not. It's not because we're not giving 12,000 acres for it, so it's averaged out. You see?
I see.
Yeah.
Gabe, can I ask you a question? You're, you're an eggman.
Yeah.
Say, what do you think the land's worth up there on the hill?
I don't know, I mean, I'm not.
Is it worth 5,000 acres?
Oh, it's probably worth 6.
6,000 acres. And what are you wanting to pay for it?
6.5.
I think this, this averages out 7, something.
Can I give you a little history of this thing?
Yeah. Yeah.
I was on that council back 12 years ago. And Butler Fairman was drawing up a trail along the river, and a little bus stop, and a blacktop rode in. They were gonna charge us 700, like, close, 700,000, roughly. And at that time, there was maybe 780, almost 800,000 in that fund. I was like you, I was dead, I was dead-set against it. But by having that meeting that night, I found out that that money was sitting up there, and we were paying this Mrs. Albright a, a big fee every year to handle it. So I asked John Baker, I said, "Well, Julie's the clerk treasurer, and she's bonded. Why do we have to pay Mrs. Albright up in, in an acre to handle our money? Why can't we bring that money down here where we can have our own money? After all, she's bonded, and she takes care of 13 million, she can surely take care of 7, 800,000 dollars." And that's what we did. That's when we went to.
IDAM.
IDAM. Now, IDAM agreed to that for one reason. They thought we could bring that company, Carbon Motors, into that plant. And they agreed to that, they took it to court. I don't even think we paid the court cost, I think they did it all. And at that meeting, they asked us, "Set aside about 250,000 dollars to use in case of..." And, and their exact terms were that day, I remember it. Maybe electric stove will pop out of the landfill into the river, we need to patch it up. So put away about 250,000. What you do with the rest, we don't care, and they came down with this decree. Now, what I'm saying, we got this money, what, 709,000?
Right now?
Yeah.
So 615,000.
615, okay. We're getting one-half of 1% on the money. If you took 300,000 of it and put in that land, would that be a good investment? Better than the bank?
I don't know at this point.
Okay, I'm just asking.
I really think the land price is gonna drop dramatically.
Okay. Now, I said to Julie right from day one, "If IDAM thinks we should put 250,000 in a safe place to take care of that electric stove, let's plan on putting 300,000," and we discussed it today. And no matter what you do tonight, I'm gonna come back to you, even if we just got four months, and secure, 'cause we promised we would, and we're gonna put something in a secure fund that that will sit there in case that electric stove pops out. There's even cars buried down there. Okay? Now, it makes no difference to me, I got four months, and you got it, you got it all figured out. But it makes, it, it looks like it would make good sense to buy an investment that's worth more than 300,000.
Well, then we can do it, then we can do it in four and a half months, the new council.
No.
That's what I'm saying.
Mr. Mayor, I have a concern.
Okay.
My concern is, we're talking about buying the ground, and the money's there for the ground. My concern is, then we're gonna try to depend on corporate donations to build these little things. Well, my experience with corporations lately has been that one is threatened to move out if we didn't give them a whole bunch of money. And I can't see them donating much toward, at least the one I'm thinking of, donating much toward a ball field.
I, I think you were thinking about, uh, it was ball people, wasn't it?
I'm sorry?
Wasn't it ball teams that put out grants for this kind of stuff?
Well, you know, once, once you secure ground, it opens up a whole new area for you. Nobody's gonna look at you if you don't have anything to throw it at. And that's, that's what the little leagues that, that put money in the fields and so on like that. Now, I'm talking an area here that's not my expertise, you're not gonna give someone that's more. But the, Gabe was talking about phase, to me, this is phase one. If you show that you're, you're willing to put the money forth, then, then I think the grants and the little leagues and the powers that be will start funding. Now, are they gonna hand us $2 million to that? No, they're not gonna do that. But they will see that, that we're, we're willing to invest in ourself, and they will invest in your city. I'm just telling you, you've gotta have, you've gotta have confidence in yourself.
Well, I'm just gonna say, I respect what they say, but I'm totally just the opposite. I think, I think we should buy it. I don't think we should leave 250,000 dollars in that fund, I think you should leave less than that. I think that this is an absolute no-brainer. It doesn't matter to me if it's four months or two months. If I were coming in on a new council, I would be excited as heck to have this land. I have something to work with, I have, I don't have to worry about it. Who cares if I have the money right now? I'll figure out a way to get it. And, you know, if, if you've ever been down to those ball fields, when they're flooded, okay? There are two feet of water in there, they're, they've thrown away more popcorn, more donuts, more cokes, more sunflower seeds than you can count. I mean, I remember when Mike Isaacs went down there and hauled a truckload of stuff out of that one, 'cause it had flooded, flooded all the way up to the windows. And that wasn't just once, that was many times. And I was worried about, you know, I mean, I hate worms, but I mean, you know, worms crawling around all over the place, and, and I don't know what kind of diseases were down there, and, you know, it's absolutely ridiculous to go down there and play, number one. And, um, this is, I mean, it's under appraised value, and I understand the, the plan. You know, I understand the plan, you wanna have a plan. Well, make a plan, but buy the land. You know, I mean, you gotta have the land, and you've gotta, I mean, well, we don't even have a, a, a boys' club anymore. You know, I mean, what have we gotta do, let everything shut down because we're afraid? I mean, it's stupid. And, I mean, I get, I get emotional about it because my kids are gone. But there are kids coming up that have to play in a flooded ball field that, it's just, it's, it's ridiculous. You have the money, spend it, take less, I mean, I would put 150,000 in that remediation fund and use the rest for whatever I needed to use it for. And if the stove pops out, it's not gonna cost 150,000 if a patch of hole the stove pops out. It's just, it's just what this city needs. We need a shot in the arm, and I think, Anna, didn't you say there's some additional monies or something that we might make a little trail or something over there? I mean, maybe I'm making that up. But it's a good thing to make up. But, you know, it's just there. I mean, it's there, and it's, it's, hell, we might be dead by the time it's over, but it's there. So that's, that's my.
Well, you're, you're already using it, you already got the soccer fields there. Uh, it, it is, I, I can't understand why you don't think that this is not part of phase one, because it is phase.
No, I'm not saying it's not phase one.
Yeah.
We're saying there's not a phase two.
Yeah.
And if there's not a phase two, or a phase three, or a phase seven, 10, whatever.
Okay, how, how.
You gotta have, if you're gonna have a plan.
Okay.
You make a plan, the entire thing. Phase one, we buy the land. Phase two, we build one diamond, whatever it is, three, three diamonds. I don't really care what it is, but have some, a ballpark for the ballpark, you know what I'm saying? You gotta have a ballpark number.
Exactly.
An estimate, you gotta have an estimate there of, of how much the, that you might be spending. I mean, right now, we're looking at a financial emergency, we don't see that ending. So the city will not have any money to, to put into this thing. So we don't even have any kind of facts or figures to even base any kind of decision on, except for we're gonna buy a piece of land, and that land's gonna sit there, because right now, we got no other.
Well, that's, that's a big maybe.
But you didn't say that, that the city was gonna, was to put our, our money in it. I, I didn't hear you say that.
It doesn't matter if the city's putting it or not.
Well, it does, you just said it did.
No idea how much it's gonna cost.
Okay, okay, let's get some other opinions. Let's get some other, how, how much is the rent gonna come off of that corn crop?
Oh, wait a minute, Mr. Mayor, wait a minute. This is a council discussion.
I'm asking a question, how much rent do you get off of that?
You said the people, ask the people.
You're gonna pay.
Well, I don't know, it's rented now by the landowner, I don't think I'm fair to say what he's getting off of it.
I mean, is it $200 an acre?
We're renting, we're renting land up north right now for 305 an acre.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, but what, what, what would you say on the average?
I don't know what that ground would rent, you'd have to talk to Mr. Stoops.
Well, we're renting, we're renting the north property up there at 305 an acre, 'cause we signed it here at the board of works.
Some of the cash rents are, yeah, very, very high.
But, Remy, let's hear from me.
Now, the, the cost of a ball diamond, okay?
I have no idea what it costs.
Well, it doesn't make any difference.
Nobody knows.
Whether it's on that property or whether it's on another property, that's irrelevant. But you've gotta have a place to put it. Now, if I'm gonna go to a design engineer and say, "Design me a ball field," he'll say, "Show me your land." I gotta design it for the land that you've got. I can't just design something that you don't have.
Is, is a landowner trying to sell it to someone else and we gotta get it right away? So if we waited until we had a plan of place with this as our back, with this as our backdrop? Couldn't they build, build a plan around that?
I, I, I really can't speak for the landowner. I don't know what he's got in mind. I, I do know that we talked him into agreeing to this, this price. I don't know whether I'm gonna sit here and tell you it's gonna go up, I don't think it's gonna go down. Personally, I disagree with you on land. Land is land. You, you, you never lose on investment in land. You can always kick a tree. Houses burn down and fall down and rot down. Land's always gonna be there. You can't go wrong in land. But there again, uh, phase two, how can I ask for a design when I don't know what to tell them what to design on? This is just a conceptual drawing that we put on there.
I mean, they, they go with that.
Yeah.
I, I don't care. Just have a plan of place.
And, and that's, 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 I wish I could get you to see that. That is plan one. That is plan one.
That's a pretty picture.
I like plan one, it's fine.
Yeah.
I just wonder what two looks like.
Now, back to the financial emergency. This has nothing to do with the financial emergency in the city. We can't use the money anywhere else except an environmental issue. Your council just told you.
No, it does. Because at some point, there are gonna be other expenses that come, come about. Let's just say, for example, let's just say, for example, it costs a hundred thousand dollars to build a, to the diamond.
Okay.
And they get a grant for, let's just say, eighty thousand dollars. Or there's twenty thousand dollars that's gotta come up somewhere.
Okay.
Where are they gonna ask? Well, they're gonna ask the city to come up with it. Now, that's twenty thousand dollars that we don't have, that we wouldn't be able to put towards that.
Can you use the Riverdale Fund for that?
If, if corporate doesn't kick in.
I know, I'm just asking.
Who are you talking about corporate? What kind of corporate we got?
I'm just, I'm just talking about, I'm just talking about individuals that said, "Yes, I wanna, I wanna invest in your city because you're investing in yourself." I, I wish I could get you guys over this point, that you gotta believe in yourself.
We should adopt the corporation.
Now.
No, I agree with you. I think personal individuals would do it.
Listen to them.
However, I think you gotta have a plan.
If we purchase the property, and if nothing happened for five years out there, we've still got a little revenue coming in that we don't have now just off the crop. You can't lose.
We're, we're, we're still gonna have insurance and everything on it.
Yeah, you're gonna, you are gonna have insurance on that.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna be high.
And we're making what, one and a half percent right now?
No, we're making one, one and a half.
Yeah, but right now, we're making one and a half percent on that money, so we're not paying insurance on that.
Ron, first of all, thank you for coming.
Oh, you're fine.
And taking, taking this abuse. I appreciate that. But, and like I said, and I, and I understand, and not put words in Gabe's mouth either, but your, your, your kind of philosophy, which I'm glad you're positive, is field of dreams. Build it and they will come, okay? That's, that's good.
Not quite that far.
But, but I'm just saying, from my fiscal luxury, is responsible for the city's funds, okay? I, I'm just saying, you got all new people, man, bring this project in January and they can run with it. That's all I'm saying. I don't think the timing's right. That, that's just me.
Okay.
Thank you.
You wanted to share something?
Well, is that, did you wanna speak, Gabby?
I've said my piece.
Remy, do you wanna speak on this issue?
Well, I, I'm not for it because I feel like that we can't afford that right now. I know the money's free, but if you got a lot and you don't have other plans to go with it, you're talking about just build one ball field at a time? Well, that ain't gonna work. Where's, where's the other kids gonna play at while you're doing that? And can they build a flood wall down here?
No, DNR will not let them build a flood wall. That's out. That's completely, don't even think about it.
Well, they've been there that long and until we get jobs and factories in this town where we're making money, I think we oughta hold off. You didn't have two Ks and these kids ain't gonna have no way to get out there. Right? They wanna put the swimming pool out there. That'd been a disaster. Well, it got at the park and that was the best thing. And I, I'm, no, I'd have to vote against it, Phil. And I don't think it's right to put on the new people that's coming in, throw it on their back. They're gonna have a lot to take care of.
Okay.
Well.
Connie, did you have anything to say about it?
Yeah, um, well, I, I'm gonna go off of what Gabe said a little bit. Based on, um, our other projects that we were asked to do, like example of the Roberts Building, we got asked to put in a certain amount and then we got, they came back to us for more. Um, I feel like that might be a case that would come back to us. And it's, if it's not weekly, it's bi-weekly, that we see an article in the paper that, um, that discusses our, um, our financial emergency, the tax caps and how little money we have coming in, um, and, and the financial emergency. I think if we were to say that we had just bought a ball field, ball complex, I, I think we would have major egg on our face if we, I mean, we were on national TV saying that we were broke. I, I mean, I just don't, I don't see how we could, you know? And, and then, then my next point is gonna be, um, I've been on the committees for the trails and I think that a ball field for a certain age of children, age of the population of Connersville, for six weeks out of the year is, I, in my, in my opinion, is a little bit of a stretch using environmental money slash nature, you know, slash whatever that's supposed to be used for. And that's just my opinion.
Fran, do you have anything to add to this?
I'd like for Ron to comment on if we continue to use this present location. Idem requests that we do major improvements to the water and sewage in the area.
Well, there, there is, there is some talk that we're gonna have to be some work done down there for, for, for environmental reasons and that's wellhead protection and so on like that. And to be hon, I just know that there, there is some things coming down the road. I don't know enough about it as far as telling you expenditures and so on, that's gonna have to be spent down there. But I will tell you that that's gonna hit you somewhere.
I believe it's over two hundred thousand dollars, I believe.
It's, it's the fact that if we move out of there, we don't have to separate the sewer.
We don't have to do the water service.
If we stay there, we have to separate it. The estimate's two hundred and fifty thousand.
Ron, do you know how much it costs every time it floods? How much the city has to pay to go down and clean it up?
Mike or the, not Mike, name over. Arthur's probably between four and six thousand.
Okay.
But a, a couple of things. Connie, you say we use it six weeks. I mean, we got our second set of leagues on two fields going, again.
Ball, baseball?
Yeah, and softball and kickball. And we got adult soccer down there. We got adult kickball going on down there. And then we say, we can't get kids out to the soccer field. But our biggest sport is three hundred and fifty kids in the spring and three hundred and fifty kids in the fall, to soccer, and we're getting them out there. So, I mean, they're finding ways to get there. And that's our biggest sport.
I think we've heard from most of the council.
I got one thing to say.
I'm gonna break the rules here tonight and let's see, as people in the audience would like to be.
Miss Cole, I, I wanna, I wanna tell you, I, I think this project is awesome. I really do. I think it's exactly what, what I envisioned to make the city better. I, I think this type of thinking is spot on. I just really wish there was more to it. And, and I think if, if there was a plan kinda laid out, so at least a roadmap, it doesn't have to be clear. Just a roadmap, hey, we wanna go here and then after we purchase the land, this is the next step. And this, I think that would make it, for myself anyways, I'd feel much more comfortable in supporting it.
I, I say the very same thing when, when, when we look at this. I said, "Look, to me, there's gonna have to be a plan put together." But to me, the starting of the plan is securing what you're gonna do.
I agree.
And then after you secure what you go do, you can design from there. Now, whether this is developed in, like I say, six months or six years, I don't know. But you've got to have a basis to start from. The money's there. Has nothing to do with the city, the, the city financial problems at all, other than the fact that we might be getting some revenue off corn out there for, for a few years or a few months or whatever. And I don't think that's an argument. So, you know, one and a half percent on your... And I'll tell you what's gonna happen. I, I've seen it happen over the last ten years. There'll, there'll be somebody from Indianapolis come out and wanna do another little study there, say, "Man, you've got money, land there, we can do this." And their money's gonna get away from you and you're gonna have nothing. That's what's gonna happen. I've seen it happen before, so.
I'm not saying, no, I'm just saying, it needs, I think it needs to be, have more to it than just, hey, we wanna purchase the land. Cause at that point, there's not a lot past that. We wanna build ball fields. Well, how many ball fields? Right now, you got six up there and it looks like, was that a football field?
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, is that what we're looking at doing? And if that's what we wanna do, or are we looking at the first two fields going up there? Are we looking at the, the four fields going up there?
Well, again, what's...
I think that needs to be in place first.
Once, once the seriousness of this there, that we're gonna do something, then you put your committees together and your powers that be that knows how to design this stuff and so on like that, and you start putting figures together. But there again, we've got, we've got, we've got no basis to start from other than a fictitious idea. A fictitious idea is a lot less than a piece of ground and an idea.
But a fictitious idea with a plan is a lot better.
And that's what we've got. It's plan, it's plan the land first and then we'll...
Americanism, real quick. Do you remember when we were doing the movie theater? Harold, you were here. We do the movie theater. We kinda had a plan. I mean, it changed weekly. It changed weekly. And I mean, we didn't know if we were gonna have two theaters. We didn't know if we were gonna have six theaters. We didn't know if we had eight theaters. All we knew was, we wanted a movie theater. And at the time, Max was there, I was there, Joe Glawaki was there. And they made it happen and the plan wasn't set. We had no idea when he came here, how many he was gonna... Matter of fact, he increased it from four to eight, I think. How many we have now? Eight, ten, something? But he increased it, you know? And that was well after the time that we signed the agreement that they were gonna come here. This is exactly the same thing. We are taking a chance on the community. We have the money that cannot be used for anything else. You can see us on CNN, CNN all you want, but the money cannot be used for anything else. There's no expense to the city, basically, until we decide to do something. We have it there. I mean, and, and if, what the insurance cost? The farm, the, the crops will take care of the insurance. I, I'm sure it's gonna be less than the insurance we pay in a flood plain. I mean, it's just common sense. I mean, it worked for the movie theater, you know? And it'll work for this. I mean, take a chance on the city. Let, I mean, don't let everybody see that every building in this town is closing and we're not doing a damn thing. And now we're worrying about whether or not the, the, the poor guys in the council, when you come, if you'll be okay with it. You'll be fine with it. You just take it, Ron.
I, you know, the...
I mean, we did the same thing when we were elected. We had things on the table.
Back to the insurance issue. Do we not have insurance on the soccer fields out there now?
We do.
That's what I'm saying. So that, it's, it's a new, it's a new factor.
Listen, liability insurance is very inexpensive. You get into insurance, we get buildings.
It's not on the building structure.
Ron, if it's all right, is there anybody else like to speak for out there before we? Wait, wait just a minute. Did you two wanna speak in favor or against or something? Foundation?
Can I ask, can I ask something before? I wanna go back to something Daryl said. I don't mean to be argumentative, but if we are really just talking about baseball fields, 'cause you already have a very successful soccer complex. And, and if you are talking about baseball, then I guess I have a question. Does Connersville run the baseball?
Not right now. We run the softball.
But we will, if we move it. So, in reality, we are talking about if, you know, these, these possible threats of having to do something at two hundred thousand dollars for the old Babe Ruth, then there are options. They doesn't, they don't have to play at Babe Ruth. We have these other parks. I guess that, I feel that as if that needs to be thrown out there as well.
You, you have other parks, but you, you have no parks that's actually going to show the aggression to the city and show forward-thinking as, as a sports complex. I mean, again, just about all of your cities have got them. Now, I realize, we're not all the cities and we're Connersville. But we're gonna have, folks, I'm telling you, you're gonna have to think of investing in yourself. If you don't have enough, uh, uh, fortitude to, to invest in yourself, nobody's gonna look at you. I'm sorry, that's just the way it works. And you're, you're gonna have to be forward-thinking.
I don't think baseball will bring the people in.
You don't think?
We thought carbon would bring a lot of people in, but it went down there.
Are you?
No, I'm not kidding. I don't think it's gonna bring it in for several years. There's no, if you had that big a turnover, there's not no motels for them to stay or restaurants to eat or nothing else.
Wouldn't that be a great problem? Wouldn't that be a great problem?
It's been an hour now. Do you two wanna speak on behalf of this or if you do? And then we're gonna throw it open here and let some others talk and...
Gabe, I wanna let you know about, you know that it would cost about sixty thousand dollars to get access from Memorial down to the river for canoe launch. We have that determined by DNR that has looked at Fayette County. They said for about forty years how to get river access. They want to be in the city. We've looked at several locations and this is actually the one that they picked.
I think it's great.
That's kind of what led me to Ron. We know that the trail development is gonna be about ten thousand dollars there. We have rough estimates and available grants. They just want, they wanna know that you have the land. And so to say that to develop a soccer complex was a hundred thousand and this is gonna be a little bit more because you have the brick dust, you have the fence, you have those things. I don't wanna be premature to say that, you know, can we get the playground that's out from there out to this facility? Leonard was able to negotiate to get the building trades, to build the building that's currently there. Those are things that we have talked about. Those are things that we have listed. But to spec those out...
I don't even spec. I just like a plan. Like, hey, we wanna do this first and then this second and this third and this fourth and, and that kinda thing. And then, like ballpark figures. I mean, how much does it cost to do a, a ball field? How, how many ball fields we play on, put in at a time? That's, that's the only thing. I mean, I love the idea, I mean, I really love the idea of the river access. And I, I love the idea of having places for kids to play. I think that's great and I think my kids could benefit from it and it's tough for me to say no. But, but with the same token, I don't think that the, the plan is got, I don't think there is a plan. Outside what you just laid out, I mean, outside of that.
There's a plan and for developing this. And the goal of the foundation is to develop this all at once, is not to side it out.
The, they develop the whole, all the ball fields and?
Yes.
So what's that? What's ballpark on that?
The ballpark on that is directly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
For all six fields?
That's what our hope is to just working with local people and trying to get that done. I can't say that it, that it won't be a little bit less than that or a little bit more, but hopefully with the joining of the existing soccer club board. You know, they have a treasury, they have the same thing going on and the same thing with Babe Ruth. Using those existing people. We know that, um, the Babe Ruth field is successful with their concessions. Where is that money going now? Is there a remedial fund? Is there something for capital improvement? I think with the city's oversight, those things can be set aside, that the ball field would continue and be taken care of so that it doesn't fall back onto the tax base. You already have six fields down there. As a mother, I would not let my child walk around down there because of the swinging bats. You know, every year, a child gets hit by a bat down there. So you're looking at a safety structure. You can save from egress. If a mom's coming in on one side and the dad tries to take the child, there's a stop on the other side. No child is gonna be taken out of here. No child is gonna be taken out of here. You also have the ability for Babe Ruth to continue to get their tournaments like they have been successful and bring people to town. And I think it would be much easier to say, well, it's over by the other fire station, you know, the one over by the laundromat, than able to say it's on Veterans Memorial and one.
Yeah, I think that would be much better for the tournaments.
I think that the time is now to move on it. I think that what Ron said was very true, that we invest in ourselves.
Well, I agree. So is there, like, here's my question. Let's say it costs $100,000. Let's say you can't get that up to $100,000 until five years. Are we just gonna sit and wait to get to do that? Or we wanna see progress immediately?
Our goal is to be able to have farmland in 2016 and then be building once the farm ground is harvested in the fall.
And what about the river access? Because that could be done.
We would start moving on that probably in the spring.
So there is a plan. I mean, you have a plan.
Well, we've talked obviously about, I'm good.
We don't have like February $200,000.
No, I just want like to give some direction.
So we've met with DNR. We've met with the bicentennial trust to get money. We've met with donors. We've looked at how much fields cost at Grand Field in Westfield. We've talked to people in Batesville, how much their fields cost.
With the bicentennial land trust, have any money available for that? Because I know they need a 50% match.
We are sitting on that money, and the foundation is willing to match it. We are in a 90-day counting period.
So it could be less than the $300,000 if we hit the bicentennial?
If we were able to move on this.
Anna, if this fails tonight, then do we lose the trail completely?
For now.
To develop that as a riverwalk, yes.
We lose that opportunity?
We do not have access. The DNR has looked at Smalley's Lake and that area there, and there is not a canoe launch, which is part of what the foundation wants to do.
With the bicentennial money, we will not be eligible for them.
That's correct.
So we will lose that?
We would lose that because the land cannot be parceled out.
How much is the total bicentennial money for the whole three counties? It's a huge figure, right?
It's a big figure.
You know what that is, Gabe?
I don't, but it's very large.
I've heard it, yeah.
It's very, very large.
This is a portion of that. Did you want to speak on its behalf? This is Economic Development Director, Dan.
I appreciate your thoroughness as a council to examine this and to be diligent and careful. And I wouldn't get on the wrong side of any one of you for love or money, because I'm gonna come at you later down the road and want stuff. But having said that, sometimes I think we work overtime to look for reasons not to do things. I think there's an urgency involved here. I don't know that the land can be bought. It is cheap four months from now, maybe, maybe not. I think that if you exercise some faith, you know, faith precedes the miracle, I think we should, should do this. I think the money is sitting there, and it has sat there for how many years?
Twelve, about.
Twelve years.
Well, the city's had it for six years.
It's sitting there. And I wouldn't give the stove a nickel. I would use that money, and I'd build that thing. I would build, I would set the infrastructure, I wouldn't give them a nickel. I'd spend all the money on this. Our youth is our most valuable resource. Our children is our most valuable resource. And we need to pour something back into this community. When we talk to companies that want to come here, they ask, what do you got? What are your amenities? What do you do for fun? I say, well, we got this smelly old ball field out here, the floods, and smell like a river every time you, I just think...
Now, you really tell people that, or just you say?
No, I'm just selling.
Oh, that's what I kind of...
I'll hold two fingers up for the truth.
Okay, I appreciate that, Dan. I really do.
So, and we should be like heart about this. We really should. I mean, I think sometimes we get just so serious about this, like it's a tug of war and it's gonna be the end of the world. I don't think it is. I think that money's sitting there, let's use it, put it to use. I don't think we can go wrong buying the acreage. It's adjacent to the soccer fields today. That's a beautiful complex, the way it's set, and there has been some planning done, it's been evidenced by any of it. So, my suggestion is roll the dice, buy the land if nothing else, you get a corn crop out of it. But I don't think we'll get a corn crop. Forget the stove, put all the money into it. That's my piece.
Tom, it's hard to put lipstick on a pig. And you see what I'm saying? Yeah, people come to town, we show them our ball field, and we're gonna show them how great it is. It's kind of hard to dress it up sometimes. It really is. All right, go ahead, Mayor, I'm sorry, I guess I'm done.
Okay, we've kind of heard from everybody here that's kind of proposing this thing now.
Well, I think that one lady back there wanted to talk to you.
Well, we're gonna let everybody talk, Ruby, just hold on. But I think we're a little wrong on the percentage. We're getting less than 3/4 of a percent on the money. Less than 3/4 on the money. Okay, I don't know where to start. Just raise your hand, you want to speak.
I don't.
Come to the podium, please. State your name and your address and...
I'm David T. Sorry, I've been doing beans, canned beans. My name is Rachel Weiszeit, and my question would be based on something that Mr. Coldiron said. He said that, I think he did, correct me if I'm wrong, that ID, IDEM, said that within a short period of time that we would be needing to do some environmental things down at the current, well, the...
Now, that's not, that's misunderstood. But what we need to do down there, we have a separation project planned for that area. If we move out of that area and turn it into farmland, we don't have to do that project. It saves about $250,000 on the separation project. But IDEM has not come to us and said that we have to do anything down there, other than we have to separate the sewer and the sanitary. And those of us that know there's a great big manhole down there, it's just a backup room, Mesa Store, and the water comes pouring up through that.
Right, and I guess that this understanding, saying that IDEM said that we needed to do some environmental things, then my response to that would have been, could that $200,000 that you kind of estimated come from the trust to take care of that? That's kind of another misunderstanding came in, I guess.
We can't use any money out of that trust to do the separation project.
That's a different pool.
That's a different project.
Okay, that was just a general question to ask.
That all comes from stormwater.
And when it comes to wellhead protection too, that's a whole different ballgame also, because our wells are done, but that's a whole different ballgame also.
I just meant when you said it was an environmental issue, when we were talking about it, being remediation, could that be? And that was just my question. It wasn't to oppose or in favor of, just the question. Thank you.
Who wants to be next? Come on, Mr. Willis, come forth.
Jack Wilpova, Jack Willis, 2063 Ohio. I'm a big sports fan, if anybody knows me, I love sports, I love the kids. My question is, these four fields that you want to build, will we have a problem that of a parent that would have to watch one of their children by the ballpark we have now, and then drop one of them off to go to another field and have it? If we, I think if you're gonna build them all, we should build them all at the same time, so that everybody plays at the same place.
Anna, can you answer that?
Yes.
Huh? That's the plan?
That's all six at the same time. Actually, it was shown so that with additional need, then you could go ahead and finish the cloverleaf and have four additional on the other side.
That's the four that's in the middle there, all circled up?
No, it's where the, it's where the flag football field is, you can finish out the cloverleaf there.
Yeah.
And also, you may, I want things to change in Connersville. I want us to bring new business and stuff to the town, and anything that can help us do something, I'm all for. Will this generate money? How much money will we generate, yeah, money will we generate from these fields, of these tournament play coming in? Can Daryl, can you help me with that?
It'd be hard to say right now, I mean, but, you know, they make a lot of money out of the tournaments, like through Centerville that run them. I mean, they're bringing in $400 a team. I mean, we're not gonna get what Westfield's getting, I mean, they're bringing in...
Of course not, I've worked out there.
They bring in better teams every weekend, you know, but...
Right.
You're gonna bring in 15, 20 teams, I mean...
Are you talking every weekend?
Well, I don't know if you remember, every weekend, you gotta play there. You're gonna generate probably $5,000 to $8,000 a month, I just turned...
It's gonna generate more than we got now.
Yeah. Okay, fine, I'll be with it. And one thing, I read a story on the news that in five years, 20%, 27% of high schools will no longer have sports programs anymore because of the money factor. It caught, and our enrollment in our Babe Ruth baseball is down because it costs a lot of money to pay. It goes down every year, the amount of kids that play. We have maybe four or five teams a league. Sometimes they have to play with eight players, because they can't get enough kids out there to play. So, I think that is a problem right there. We build these new fields, we better make sure we have enough kids that can play and sustain the league. You can't be playing baseball with eight peoples on the field, that's ridiculous.
Maybe we should be building nursing homes, huh?
Could I be the first one to be brought in? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who's next, who'd like to speak?
I'd like to speak.
Hi, Dave.
How you doing?
Welcome back.
Thanks. You people, where's the list of 10 worst places to live in Indiana? We're number eight. And Leonard, correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of factories who have come here and looked at things, their wives don't like this place because there's nothing to do. And you want a plan, you've got one right there starting. And I don't understand you people, I really don't. This town is going nowhere except down the toilet. You have an opportunity to make something better, and you're sitting with this look on your face on money that was put back years ago. I was part of that when we were cleaning that up back during the early 90s. I just don't understand. And you wonder why everybody wants to leave this town and not come back?
No, I didn't, I didn't wonder that.
My two kids, hold on a minute, my two kids, Leonard, was here not long ago, didn't they? And you ask them, you think you'd ever move back to Connersville? No, no way. So, I think you guys ought to all think about this. There's a good plan here. I don't get up here that much, and I have before, so for the things or talking against something.
So you're talking as a resident now, you're not talking as chief.
No, I'm not talking about the police chief.
Just to make that very clear.
There's nothing here. And it's already proved, we're on the top 10 list of worst places to live, mainly because there's nothing to do, and we're out in the sticks. But at the same time, we're in between three major cities. And the people here just, we're our own worst enemies. And that's all I'm gonna say. And I'm not talking here as a police chief, I'm talking as a citizen. Rest of my case.
Thank you, sir. Who's next? Come on, sir.
My name's George Wardman, and I talked to you guys a couple weeks ago about Cooley's, this is a completely different story. Looking at the map up there, wasn't it before the soccer field was even put in, that a guy wanted to put a driving range, and he had to stop because he hit a burial ground? What if we get out there and start putting out ball fields and parking lots when he hit a burial ground? You can't move a burial ground.
George, there was no driving range there?
Yeah, but he moved across the other side of the rivers, why?
It's on the east side.
They're on the same side, George.
Well, I'm saying, you know, but the Indians, they run the river. You have no idea where their burial grounds at till you start digging.
Oh, I don't know.
You know, nobody knows. What if you buy this property, and you go up there and you find about three burial grounds and left field tents? What do you do then?
We sell tickets.
It's an Indian game. But that's just for one of the, you know, you go, I don't know if they got the surveyors to tell you what's up under the ground or not.
Mr. Wardman, I want to tell you something. I come from the UP in Michigan, where the Ojibwe Indians were. There's an Indian burial ground at Chicagoland Lake, and it is the biggest tourist attraction there is in the UP.
Really?
They pay money to go in there constantly, just to see where the chief is buried and his wife, and the difference in the size in the teepee he got, what she get, and it has nothing to do with this, but, I don't know, but I don't know much about Indian burial grounds.
But I just say, you know, we run into that, what we do. You know, we put the money out to buy the ground, it's hard.
The burial ground, they found out by, out west of town, it was moved.
Was it, didn't move it?
Yes, they moved it.
I didn't think it was.
I was there too when that happened.
Well, there's corn on it right now.
Yeah. Well, then they was digging up there along, where they went up and hit the high school road. Remember, they was digging all along there? They didn't find anything, did they?
Thank you so much for your comment. Who wants to be next, Lynn?
I do want to say something.
Oh, come on in, just give us your name.
I'll be quick.
You don't have to be quick, just be whatever you want to be.
Anyway, Tim Bentley, and, you know, I hear a lot of the council...
You live in Hanson Meadows.
Hanson Meadows. I hear a lot of council, you know, talking about timing and stuff, and I, most of you know, I am running for city council at large, and I'm up here as a resident, not as a political stand, but, you know, I really believe, everybody I've heard talk, I agree with what everybody's saying, but more than anybody, I agree with what Gabe's saying. We've got to have a plan. You know, for a number of years, I served on the youth league boards in Liberty. Resigned last year when I decided I wanted to get more involved in Connersville. And I'm also a real estate broker, licensed broker. I think we ought to get more appraisals on this land. I agree with Gabe, that seems a little steep if we're just gonna use that for cornfields. If the stoops, and they're residents here, if the stoops really want to help Connersville, they'll work with us. They'll wait a few months. You know, I see several business people here. Is anybody willing to raise their hand and say, hey, I'm willing to put in? Let's be leaders. You know, I know Gary, Ron, several people.
I've got about 15 months in it right now, so...
I know you do, I know you do, I know you do. Dan, I mean, Anna, I mean, I like what I'm hearing, but one of my big concerns that I have, and Daryl and I had this conversation, right now, Daryl's kind of running this all by himself and does a good job, but if we're gonna build this elaborate baseball field, we need a board to run this. I believe we ought to have some public forums to talk to the public, see what they're gonna do. We need to figure out how we're gonna structure the board. This is a big project, and we're talking several hundred thousand dollars coming in. We're talking concessions coming in. Who's gonna run this? I don't, Daryl, you don't have the resources to do all that, do you?
We're pretty much running that one now.
You know, and, you know, we talk about numbers declining. Liberty's a town a third of the size of Connersville, and the years that I was on the board over there, you're talking a town 4,000 people or so?
1,800.
Even smaller.
I studied that one a little bit.
Okay, but we ran...
9,000 in a county.
We ran 400 to 500 kids over there in our youth league. So, they will come if it's, if we structure it right, if we have a plan like Gabe said. I think we can make it successful, but I believe we've got to have a good plan put together, and I think we need to do our due diligence. And I know you guys have started a great foundation, and I'm 100% for it, I'm supportive of it. Like Gabe, I've got younger kids, I live in the area, it would be an asset to my neighborhood. But I just, I think we need to keep moving, but I think as hopefully a potential councilman here in a few months, I don't think there's enough facts that I want this on the table for me to have to deal with. I think we need to keep moving, but just to say, hey, let's buy it today, my thoughts is premature. So, it's all uphill.
Thank you. Who's next? Yeah, Brian.
I'm Brian Dobb.
You live on that brand new street on Grand Avenue?
It's not done yet. Thank you for the progress.
By the end of the month, you'll be driving out.
I got a sidewalk in front of my place, so I'm happy with that.
Did you put your initials in it?
No, no, I can't believe they did that, but, I've listened to all of you guys, I think all of you all have some great comments about it. I agree with Gabe too, and what a lot of you said. I think we need a game plan, but also know Anna pretty well, and I know Anna's not gonna go after something without a game plan. Now, I don't know if it's been shared with all of you, where all of you can actually see it. I'm a numbers guy. I like looking in front of me, and I like to be able to see where the money's coming from, where it's gonna go, what everything's gonna cost, you know, and most of you have made that comment. Also, I'm big in investment. There's three main things you invest in, and that's the number three things you invest in right now. One of them is water resources, that we have plenty of. Another one is raw materials, gold, silver, and the other one is land. We got to look at and see if this is, could be resold, if by chance something happens, and if we use this money from the fund that you were talking about, the remediation fund. If by chance we look at it, and we buy it, and things fall through, can we resell it? Can we recoup our money? If we can't, I'd probably lean more towards it's probably not gonna be a good thing. If we can recoup our money, then yes, I would think that this probably is gonna be a good thing. I understand what you're saying, Gabe, that we all need a plan. We need to be able to look and see what phases. I think we need to be able to show better of what things are gonna cost. I think we need to look at, I've said it before, and some people think I'm crazy, we need to look at the timber. If we're gonna be going down towards the river, if there's some strong timber in there that's not gonna be detrimental to the river, one we look at. If we're gonna be recouping money from crops, this ball field might not happen for another 10 years, but if we can actually recoup money, we're roughly up in some figures, we might be looking at six grand a year. That's gonna take care of the insurance for the land. I agree totally that we build it all at the same time. If we do it, then we move it all over at one time. Because I've heard somebody else, I think Tim mentioned it too, if we try to be able to move from here to there and do different things, we're spinning our wheels. We got to look and see what grants are built. I understand what Dan Parker and Ron Coldiron and other people have mentioned, that if it's there, then there might be grants available for it. We got the funds right now, that can we use those funds for anything else? Me, I'm number one business guy. I'd want to be able to see if that fund can be used to buy land to bring business in. That's gonna help our tax base, that's gonna help the whole situation, but that's long term. So if that money has to be used for something, and has to be used quick, and I totally 100% agree with what Mr. Coldiron was saying, because the state will come back in, and they will see that we've got a fund here, and they will find a reason to be able to make sure that we have to use it. And it's gonna be another quarter million dollar survey, and it's gonna sit on the shelf for a long time, and it's never gonna be used at all.
We got a whole shelf full of those.
We sure do. Now, another thing that we have to look at, I've done a lot of research on park boards. Daryl's done a great job at that park, so has Jess. I've also seen money come in, my girls, and I coached for fifteen years. We did travel in teams. When we go to another city, we'd see twenty teams, and we paid, back then, we were paying three to four hundred dollars a team to come in. Said, look at fifteen, if it's built. We get fifteen teams paying three or four hundred dollars, that's six grand every tournament. We could have at least one tournament a month. Now we look at the city schools, see if we can actually conjoin something that we want to do with the city schools, and see if the county would be involved to where this is not just a single city thing going on, to where it's now it's a school corporation, it's a county operation, and it's a city operation. I think this would be a great way that we step forward and work with the county and the schools. The schools here just want to be able to build a brand new soccer field up there. If they haven't built it yet, tell you what, let's go talk to them. Let's find out and see if there's an opportunity that we could work with the city school, that county school corporation, to be able to see if they're, instead of them building that soccer field, will they be willing to be able to maybe even work in conjunction with us on the city, on the, on this project? That's more money coming in, again. Now, another thing I have to look for is this a direct sale? Are we going to buy this land, and is it going through another entity? If it's a direct sale, if I'm buying some property, do I want to go through five different brokers on it? No. Can I buy it straight from the, the source? If that's the case, if the city can buy it straight from stoops, then I can understand that. I wouldn't want to have any other broker firms going in between there, somebody's profiting off of it financially. We got to see if the stoops, if they have to be able to sell it right now, if there's other entities involved. And then, like I said, with the faith implementations, we need to be able to see, get it some numbers in front of us. Like I said, I know Anna's done a great job. I've worked with her on a couple of the projects. I've seen them. You know, I've seen, you know, what the, the, oh, that big book where you give me? Comprehensive plan. You know, all these are part of the comprehensive plan that we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on, but we haven't done anything yet. Nothing. The comprehensive plan is a two-inch thick book, and we haven't touched. So, back again, the three main investments that anybody can do is natural resources, with water, gold, silver, and, and raw materials, and I don't think anybody wants to buy gold with the city's money, and land. Now, if it's a good investment, I don't know, but I think we need to get all the money or all the phases set out in front of us. We need to take a look at everything, and I don't think that'd take long, because I'm sure that Anna's got that. If we just step back a little bit, don't rush, don't try to be able to get a vote right now, don't pawn it off on the next administration, whether it's myself, Harold, or Holly. Don't pawn it off on any city council members. I think you all need to take a look at it now. All of you are elected because you all made good decisions, but I think if we just step back a little bit, be proactive, take a look at things, you know, and make good decisions. I'm not saying whether I'm for it. I'm not saying whether I'm against it. I'm just giving you my opinions. I'm looking at it as a vested investment for myself. If I was one, the money was strictly coming out my pocket, that's how I'd look at it. So this is some of my opinions. I appreciate it.
Next two would like to speak. Anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Don't be bashful.
All right, I did just ask Anna a question.
You've come to the podium. State your name and.
Sure. I'm Holly Dunn, and I live on Seventeenth Street. And I guess the question I asked Anna that I think is relevant is how long before the bicentennial money goes away? And she said approximately ninety days. And I do agree with Brian on, on several of those points there. I think that it, it doesn't have to be a decision made today, but it does, it can't wait until the next administration. And so, I mean, as far as fifteen thousand dollars is the guess, or fifteen, yeah, right now, if you ask, will you show her about approximately?
How much the bicentennial will put into with the development of the trail?
Yeah. Is approximately that. And so I feel like it's not something you want to dismiss completely, and it's a decision that you will have to look at quickly. It probably doesn't have to be decided tonight, and I wonder also if, if, if negotiation could be made for the property, and if they would come down some. Knowing, knowing what it is, I, I don't know. You guys have done a lot of work, and I appreciate all of you completely. I think that when I look at a city where I'm going to live, I want to know that there's something for our kids, and most women actually make that decision. It's kind of funny, when you look at homeownership, that's the first thing they look at, is the schools and what they're, what is available for their children, and we have a great school system, and property value is low, and if we can build something for our kids to do, it is going to attract people into homeownership in Connersville, even without jobs, and that's what data shows. I mean, there is data out there to prove it, so it's not something that I'm just pulling out of the air. It is out there. People will commute and will live somewhere where they feel like they're safe and where they feel like their kids can get a good education. So this is a great way of investing in our future, and I appreciate all of your work. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to speak tonight?
Mr. Frank? I'll be quick and short. Chad Frack, nine twenty, West Third Street. I'm looking at it from an investor standpoint. I invest in real estate. It's one of the things I do. To me, it's a wash. You're at three-quarter of a percent on six hundred thousand dollars, which is forty-seven hundred dollars. So you're going to take it down to three hundred thousand, so you're at almost twenty-five hundred bucks there.
Well, we're only going to take half the money.
Right, so it's twenty-five hundred bucks. If you cash right now, you're going to get twenty-seven to eight thousand dollars a year.
Yep, that's right.
To me, your cash flow is positive right away. That's a no-brainer right away. I understand the, the concept and the theory of what's it going to cost? You don't know the topography of that field. It's going to cost a fortune to get a topography done. You don't know anything about that field yet. And to, to go ahead and secure that asset now, to me, as a real estate investor, I'm saying ding, 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 jump all over that one. I'm investing out of a heartbeat. If I wanted to go dig a ditch, I got to first go buy a backhoe, which is one of the things we do. I can't dig a ditch until I go buy my backhoe. Now, do I know how I'm going to pay for that backhoe for the next thirty years? I don't have a clue. But part of that is, is the initial investment in the cap fund right up front, a good one. And to me, the five thousand dollar swing, that's a no-brainer. And there is one thing I know about Anna, she's going to get it done. When she gets her heart set on something, I'm not trying to promote her, or up her foundation, but she gets it done, and she does a very good job with everything she does. And so part of the factor of investment is I'm looking at the people around me, who's doing this? Anna's leading the charge, Ron's leading the charge on getting this done, they're going to get it done. And from, they'll get, you hear Ron talk about business to invest, it's more than just businesses to invest. You're going to get baseball, that, we call them, I don't even play baseball anymore, National, the Baseball Association, they're going to fund that. They have grants out there for it. I used to manage property in Indiana, Kentucky, and Ohio, so I traveled a lot. I had seventy-four vendors who worked for me. A lot of those guys coached baseball, and they were driving right through Connersville to go to Indianapolis from Cincinnati to play baseball. And they always managed to mention that'd be a nice place to have a great sports complex, because then it's a shorter drive and we can do more there. And they were playing teams, they start on Friday night and they play all through Sunday. Darryl, you probably know about that more than anybody.
I am Thursday night.
They, and baseball's growing. It's not slowing down. It is growing. Might be slowing down our community a little bit, but you get a complex built, and we'll come. But just from an investor's standpoint, I'm looking at going, that's cash flow positive immediately. It's not hurting us at all. If we never develop for ten years, guess what? We're still cash flow positive. It's not hurting us, even though we don't have a full comprehensive plan. We really, unless you get a full engineer survey and a topography and know how we're going to drain those fields, are you going to do that? It might cost fifty thousand dollars. Yeah, by the sky, once we get that done, it might be more like sixty, seventy. It could be twenty. You don't know the answer to that. To go ahead and secure this now, I say it's a good decision. And I appreciate the concern, waiting for the next council, but you were voted for four years, not three years and six months. And I understand that you don't want to stick someone with something. I do understand that, but it was four years. And we put you in office, every one of you, and we trust you to make the right decision, even though we're getting a new council in five weeks.
Thank you. We can do one of two things. Is there anybody else who wants to speak? I think what I'd like to do tonight is I'd like to table this whole issue, let the committee study this and get some figures. I'd like to know the cost of liability insurance on that land. I, I think it's less than a thousand dollars. I have a hundred acres, and I pay less than a thousand liability, and I have a pond on it, and when you have a pond, you have to pay more, you pay a fee. I hear some of the new people that are, some of them are going to be here sooner or later, and I hear some positives from this council, I hear some negative, and I hate to use the word negative, I think it's caution. I would like to ask this committee to get some of those things together, Anna, if you could make a more defined plan, what, because we don't really know what you're doing. I kind of do, because I've been meeting with you, but they don't. And what you plan and, and the trail, what the trail's going to amount to, I would like to know the cost of that liability insurance. I would like to know exactly what we can rent that ground for. And if Mr. Frank is right, it is positive, and I know it is, because I, I rent land and I do pretty good on it. It sure would be, and we're not talking about putting six hundred thousand in land, we're only talking about putting three hundred thousand in land and collecting six thousand dollars. We have three, uh, six hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and nine thousand, tell me.
Six hundred, six hundred and fifteen thousand.
Six fifteen in there. We've had so many figures. And, and we're getting less than three-quarter percent on the money. So it looks to me like it's a good investment for the city.
That would also make us ten thousand short, though, so where did our ten thousand come from?
What's that?
That'd be ten thousand short.
Of what?
We have six fifteen, and it's going to take three twenty-five.
Well, I think Anna tends to pay that other part, don't you? If I put three, if this city council puts three hundred thousand dollars in, do we have enough to buy it? Yes, we do. I thought we did. Okay. I, I lost my train of thought. That's what happens when you get to be an old man. But I would like to, if the council would agree with me, let me have them study it some more, or do you just want to table it until next year?
I'd, I'd like to see, if you can do a plan, that'd be fabulous. I, I think if, I think if we're doing it, that'd be fine. I really do. But I'd just like to see, I'm a visual guy. You could put something on paper.
We've got a pretty good group of citizens in here. I'd like to see a show of hands, how many of you people would like to continue to look at this? Raise your hand if you think we should continue to look at this. Raise your hand and hold it up.
It is up to us.
Isn't it up to us? Are they the?
No, I just want to see what the council, what they, don't you want to know what the people feel? This is a representation of the people. You're going to make the decision eventually, but I, it looks like the majority of the people that are in this room tonight would like for us to pursue looking at it. Now, if you guys don't want to, just tell me and we'll kill it right here.
I think we can, seriously, I think we can discuss this every meeting between now and December, if that's what you want. I don't have a problem with that. I think it's a great idea.
Do you want me to have them look into it more?
If, if people want to discuss it every month? We can do that. We did the speed bump and we did the trails and things for months. Hell, we, we've got all kinds of time. I mean, I, I don't have an issue with that.
Are there speed bumps on this?
But then you're doing a, a show of hands, I mean, like, these people represent the entire community, huh?
No, but there's a good cross-section of people here tonight.
That's why we're voted in.
They don't have anything to do with voting.
And as, as Mr. Frank said, and he's exactly right, and I intend to vote in my conscience this next four and a half months, we're the one that makes that decision.
Do you want to make a motion tonight, then, to just drop this till the next?
Absolutely not. We can talk about it every month.
Well, I'll tell you what, I want to make a motion, if that's what I'm supposed to do, to, you get this thing done by the next meeting, and then we have our plan, the best plan we can possibly have, and it doesn't have to be perfect, it doesn't have to be close to perfect, because the figures, you're probably going to be wrong anyway. But we'll have something to look at, which is visual, and we can see what it is, and we can make it a somewhat better decision from that, and then vote on it next time. That's my decision. That's my motion.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, it's a motion. I'll second that.
And we got a second. We got a motion and a second, that we continue to study this, and we look at it the next meeting or next month, and we keep working at it. When, when you folks are ready, you come back to us, okay?
And a perfect plan, right?
No, but, but let's be civil about it. You know, let's look at it in a good way here. What's best for our community, okay?
Yeah, well, two weeks. Well, we have time.
Anna, do you, do you have, we have enough time in your window with your DNR and what the other trails, do we have enough time to do that? Another thirty days? Are you okay with that?
So understanding correctly, Gabe, do you want me to find out, and I'm not being facetious, but you want me to find out how much?
Just an idea. I have no idea how much a ballpark costs to make.
Okay. Well, when we looked into just the initial plans, you know, somebody had to pay for the drawing, and then going with the engineering firm, I mean, you had the nail on the head. When we were doing the soccer field and the foundation led that, you have to look at the topograph of it. You know, looking at all of those things does cost money. So we'll have to decide if we're, you know, going to move forward with spending the money to.
Are you asking for that, Gabe?
No, not yet. Just an idea of what if, you know, just an idea.
You don't want to be that, that is precise.
No, I mean, I know things change. If you make a plan, it's going to be changed by the time you're.
Didn't you say a hundred and fifty thousand, though, for those fields, you thought?
The ones that we had contacted that have.
Okay. So they'd be close, I mean, and then you can just put it on.
Anna would get one field or?
No, it's for the entire complex.
Or for all six? Okay. Okay. That's ballpark.
Yes.
Ballpark for ballpark.
About twenty-five thousand. Yeah.
I did not put in there the river access because we're confident on a grant on that, or confident on several grants, but.
But that has to be done soon, the river access. Ninety days, you said. Don't worry, right?
Secure, you got to have something secured for the grant.
Okay.
There hasn't, I mean, getting back to it, because we don't have the land. They don't want to develop anything until we have the land.
Could we just have like a list even of, of the things that?
I'll do that, sure.
I mean, that'd be great.
Now, someone in the room tonight said something about the county. President of the county council has been working with people for grants. I, I can't remember who all he's talked to, but he seems pretty confident that he has some connections. That's your son, Mark?
Michael.
Okay. Is not, he very interested in this, so the county is involved?
He absolutely is. He's been in contact with major investors.
Okay, he has been in contact with major investors. Okay. So we have a motion and a second that we table this tonight and that we look at it again in September? Okay? You don't, is that okay?
Yeah.
Ron, will you continue to work on it?
Would that give you enough, that give you enough time?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you another.
That give you enough time?
I mean, that's, that's all it is, you know? We can guess tonight. It's only a guess, technically, so.
I do appreciate everybody being cautious. I appreciate everybody tonight being civil. We, we need to talk about these things, because Gilbert Lambert, if you all remember him, said to me years and years ago when I was a twenty-four-year-old kid, he said, if you don't speculate, you don't accumulate. And this is, this is speculative, but it's, I, I believe like Mr. Frank, and I've been pretty bold in my life. I bought a cornfield and built a hotel, and everybody said I'd go broke. I did pretty well. And I, I, I think that I'd almost buy that land myself and, and let the, let the corn pay for it, rather than let the money in the bank, half the money in the bank, and only get three-quarters of a percent. I mean, that's pretty good investment. I am confident, because I dealt with Mrs. Albright, I dealt with the judge, and I dealt with John, I'm confident that he's telling us properly, we can use that money. I think Julie and I still feel very comfortable with keeping at least a quarter of a million or more in the bank in case something, it erodes or something happens down there. I'd like to keep that in the bank, and I'd like to put that in a restricted fund that it has to lay there in case something in that, those of you that are our age, that dump is a huge dump, and we put that stone over it, and then Jerry Reeder put twelve inches of dirt over the top of it, and we can't dig more than twelve inches into it. That's the old dump. So it's, it's a, it's a wrong thing. Now, we have built those trails. Those trails are being used today. There's people down there every day. Those trails were built, we didn't spend as much money as Butler Fairman wanted us to do, but they're, they're down there, and I think all of you have been down and looked at those trails.
I think the city has a responsibility to keep a certain amount of money back.
We promised the judge we would, didn't we, John?
Yes.
We promised that we would do that, we would keep a substantial amount for the remediation of the dump should something happen.
Yeah, we, we agreed to that effect when we negotiated the.
I remember the figure being two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, I think.
Do you remember that figure?
I wasn't.
I don't recall a specific amount.
Thank you all. We're going to try to do this business, because we've only just begun. this quarter tonight.
Mayor, let me thank the council, and sorry for all the time. Our relationship with the council is going to take, appreciate the, you know, the conversation we've had. There's no personal thing here at all.
Thanks for taking the use of...
I mean, it's city business, it's city business. But, you know, like I say, I think it's great, you know, we're going to have to invest in ourself, that's all I can say. And we're going to have to, you know, wear the big boy pants and make some decisions here for ourself, let, and other people make our decisions are hopeful. I mean, we can, we'll try to get you some figures together, which I can respect that, but again, it's a pie in the sky, when you actually put a shovel in the ground, you know, they are what they are. If I was going into council next year and you give me tools to work with, I can go forward. But they're basically, if we wait, they're going to start on, you know, with nothing again, so, but give me something to work with, and I think that's what you have to look at. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
On item B, pending ordinance 32, oh, excuse me, excuse me, we need to vote on, Frank made a motion to table, I think, Gabe.
Gary made the motion.
Gary made the motion and Gabe, second motion, that we table and study. On the motion to table and study, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there you got your answer, so we're moving forward somewhat. Pending ordinance 3201, this is an ordinance, we need $12 more to pay for that machine.
It's a transfer.
A street patching issue, you didn't...
We lack $12, haven't enough to get that done.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the order, 3201.
Okay. This will be a transfer from Riverboat. We have to have a public hearing for $12?
No, it's a transfer.
Oh, just transfer, okay.
Additional population.
I've got a motion and a second?
No, you have a second.
I don't have a second?
Gary said it.
Oh, he said it.
Okay, Gary did. Okay. On pending ordinance 3201, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final reading?
Certainly.
Got a motion to suspend the rules, so we can consider pending ordinance 3201 on third and final reading. On suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, you can move forward.
Some of...
Second.
Got a motion and a second, that we consider pending ordinance 3201 on third and final reading. Is there any discussion? Not appearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We have department reports tonight, and if it's okay with the council, do the delay, I said the hour, I'll delay those and we won't have them until next month.
Oh, gee.
Yeah, I second that.
Since you want to give your report on...
Okay, that's all right, that's okay. We're going to go this time.
I'll tell you what we could do, I could be real mean and say, "Let's take a potty break, and we'll just consider this for the next two..." Wait, we haven't decided yet. Mr. Green thinks he'd like to hear the reports.
No, he said, "Oh, gee."
You'll let the reports go?
Yeah, I'll go this time. Double report next time.
All right, I've got to do a few things. I can report to the council tonight, Kirshner Avenue is paved. I don't know how many of you looked at it, but it's done. It's all done, it looks nice, everybody's happy. Mr., what do you think? Does it look nice?
Yeah, I've got something to say.
Oh, come on up, come on up. He lives on the north side of Kirshner Avenue.
Ricky Footman, you got your road tape?
Yeah. Yeah, my name is Dempsey Langhart, and I'm down here on behalf of Shane Rigger and myself. I'd like to thank Ruby and the mayor and all the council that got our, the Kirshner extension paved. We really do appreciate it, it's really nice, it's really good to drive in on a smooth road. And I just want to say thanks again to everyone.
You're welcome. And I'm amazed that the council hasn't asked me the cost.
$2,000.
Huh?
$2,000. How much?
Well, we did some weening and we did some dealing with the man, and we actually got that paid for $1,000. Now, we had to put the lock under it, and I don't have the figures on that, but we got it done. Okay.
Good.
Kirshner Avenue's done. That's under old business. We'll go to miscellaneous, is there any more old business, anybody else here? Okay, miscellaneous, Ruby, you got any?
There's Coolidge Avenue.
It's a Coolidge.
I don't know what, I don't know what that is.
That's Mr. Workman, he, you asked the police department to look into it at our last meeting.
I did, yes.
Yes.
Last time he was here, it was about Coolidge, where it joins Junkin. Coming up Coolidge is one way, but we have the people coming off of Junkin, it's coming down Coolidge the opposite way. And Mr. Pennington and there's another officer there, we met the following Friday, we kind of talked to that, what we could do, and he said, "Well," he said, "you can't have one half the street going one way and the other half going the other way." He said, "We'll work it." I said, "Okay, what can we do then?" And he said, "Well, where you come up, when you're coming in off of Summit to where you get to Coolidge, there's a sign that says one way, pointed that way." He said, "What we can do is put a sign there that says do not enter." I mean, you can't come in there, so that'll turn you right down the alley, so that'll take care of the problem. But I don't know, they're not here this evening, or I don't know what, I don't know.
David.
David, we talked before, till after.
Do you want to go up there and look at that again?
You're talking about up there where the, they got a one-way street and they got a, like a one-way alley.
No, the alley's one, you go either way on the alley.
We've looked at it before, all of these is, the alley is, is kind of a mess up there. The Coolidge is one way, it goes all the way over, like it goes into...
Coolidge comes east, right?
No, it goes south.
It goes south, then it curves into a Junkin, okay? On the curve, it turns into Junkin, which crosses Summit.
Then...
And it's a one-way street going out to Summit, and there's an apartment complex there, and the alley, I can't remember, the alley goes, is it one-way north or one-way south?
Either one.
It's two-way?
Yeah, yeah.
And it's just the way it's marked, the way it's laid out, because Coolidge isn't big enough to have a two-way street.
Well, can you talk to Mr. Pennington and find out what we need to do? We'll have to pass an ordinance in order to put a sign there, we can't put a sign there without an ordinance.
We looked at that, John and I discussed that several years ago, and I know it's been several, I know you probably don't remember, but it's something that just has to be looked at.
Look at it and get it to its first meeting in September.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but we changed horses here and we need to figure it out, okay?
No problem.
We'll get it worked out.
All right, thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you. She wrote, all she wrote online is Coolidge Avenue, I could not remember what we're doing. That's why we need a new mayor. Okay, music in the park is at 7:00 PM tomorrow night, no, Wednesday night, Wednesday night. Thursday night, we have House of Ruth on Connersville Speaks. This is all under miscellaneous business. And I'd like for that, if the press, the press is gone, they didn't even wait. They gave up on us. You have anything under miscellaneous?
No. Well, it's, yeah, I guess I do. I would just like to, you know, we want to keep businesses in town and everything, and this thing with the busters incident, you know, I would like to ask the people out there to, 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 I don't know the right words, say forgive them or whatever, and start going there again, because, you know, I've talked to them and they've laid off some single moms with kids, of course, they would be kids, but single moms, because, you know, business hasn't been like it was, and I talked to Randy, and he assures me that it was an isolated incident.
It wasn't his fault.
Yeah, it was, it was one of those things that happened on social media, you know, and it's really, really hurt them bad. And I would ask people, because they were very crowded, I asked people to go back, the food is excellent, we don't want anybody to close down. So, I just thought I'd throw a good word in for them. I went in there and everything was fine, so that's what I wanted to say.
I think that's, something like that's probably happened in every restaurant.
Well, sure.
And maybe, it just happens, those things happen. We have negotiations at 5:00 PM Thursday, you're going to do it? You're not going to do it, right?
No, I'm not.
And you're not?
Thank you.
No, it's a back-to-back in town time.
Okay, so you'll be doing it by yourself, okay? All right, and you're going to be here at 5:00, you're going to be here at 5:00 PM Thursday, okay, in the conference room. Thank you. Public forum, not that we haven't had a public forum, but anybody else like to speak on any issue? Any at all? Y'all want to go home and go to bed? There's no ballgame tonight, is there? Anybody want to speak? Public forum's over. I'll take a motion to a jury.
Salute.
I got three motions, who made it? Do you have any, did you second it, who did? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.[1772.65]